Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Michael Pacheco.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo. Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance and invocation.
Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Please join us in prayer. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Lord, help us to grow in prudence. Help us to be humble, help us to be wise. Help us to be aware of all that you are calling us to do and give us strength, the courage, and the conviction to boldly strive to do your will in every circumstance. May our mighty God bless all of you in the name of the Father, the Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
All right, we have item two proclamations, item two A proclamation proclaiming May sixth, twenty twenty-four as age-friendly city day. We have some members from UTRGV here.
Great.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And my name is Sudarshan Pasupuleti. I'm a professor in the School of Social Work at UTRGV.
Yes, sir.
I am very pleased that the city of F.A.R. has decided to proclaim age-friendly city and today being declared as a day of age-friendliness. So I would like to say a couple of things. And first of all, I want to thank the all the commissioners and the for approving this and making a proclamation. And we appreciate and we thank you for doing that. And Age Friendly Community is a is an advocacy project where we are trying to promote a friendly environment for our elderly people in our communities and in the city of F.A.R. and also beyond the city of F.A.R. in the entire Rio Grande Valley. So I am approaching as part of my project research, we are conducting research and also doing some advocacy involving the communities and the cities so that, you know, there can be appropriate policies and procedures and care systems and all in place so that, you know, we address the needs of elderly people and which also when we are improving the communities and the community environment, which will also meet the needs of other age populations. So it's a it is an inclusive community approach where we are going to address a lot of needs of people in the community. And it's basically to take care of everyone in the community while addressing the needs of the elderly population in our community and making them it's a place for a welcoming place for them to come and live in this city. So that's what you are doing and we appreciate and thank you for doing this on this day. And you are one of the few cities who have already done that by giving the proclamation today. Thank you.
Now, would you guys be providing the cities or the organizations that you're involved with in this manner? Are you going to provide us with?
Yeah.
Because this is, I'm sure this there's a a needs assessment been done, right, by every city? Are you going to be helping the city of F.A.R. in this case?
Absolutely.
Let us know what it is that we're in theory lacking or that we could be doing better?
Yes, absolutely. We are conducting a study to identify the needs of the elderly people, which also includes the needs of the dementia. So it's a very preliminary study, but we'll be sharing the results with everyone, with all the cities because we are collecting the data from the entire valley. And we have about three hundred fifteen surveys right now and we want to reach up to five hundred and then to share the results with the all the cities. We will prepare a report and share it with you. And we will also like the city to form a committee at the city level if you already don't have a committee or advisory board for the elderly population, aging people. So if you have it and we can work with that committee or a board to strengthen what you are already doing and also help you to promote age-friendliness in your city so that you can join the network of age-friendly network, which is their AARP network in the United States and also globally, there is a network, WHO network. So you can join both the AARP network in the within the country and also global network of age-friendly cities. So we can guide you and work with you how to undertake that process and addressing any research needs and other kinds of needs that you may have in the city and we can help you with that.
Great. Do you recall the Alzheimer project you guys are working on? Okay, this would be in alignment with what they're what they're initiating, right? It would support their endeavor, right? Okay, so I want to be sure. So we.
Yeah, I'm aware of the Brain Health Initiative that you already have in the city. And it's very progressive because I have not heard it, I have not heard it in other cities, but you are the one of the progressive cities who are already doing a lot of good things. And I think you can move forward further and then you can embrace age-friendly framework so that, you know, you can promote a comprehensive plan and environment for the elderly population in your city.
Actually, you'd be pleasantly surprised if what we're looking at is a possible endeavor where you private with we partner with the private sector to help, you know, dementia fix the whole family, where you're able to assist a family in taking care of those that population, almost you get they get a break, so to speak. Where we we take ownership per a period of time of those of that population so the the family can de-stress, you know, because it's very demanding. But we'll the city's working on that as as we speak as a project for our population to be able to help everybody who has a loved one. And they're always there, they're taking care of them. And at the same time, they they need a little bit of a mental break, an emotional break from that because it's it can be very demanding, as you know. So we'll share that with you as we as it progresses forward.
Absolutely. School of Social Work will be very willing to work with you, with the city to expand your services and also promote, build the capacity to take care of the elderly people in the city.
Okay. Can you make sure we get his contact information? Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're just going to get the proclamation. Who's we?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay. He's going to read it and then we'll we'll ask you to come up in a minute, okay?
Whereas the Age Friendly Rio Grande Valley AFRGV initiative is an all-inclusive and engaging movement of cities and communities focused on building and shaping a physical and social environment that fosters friendliness and livability while creating opportunities for active aging and enriching lives. And whereas the Rio Grande Valley communities are still young, but the older adult population increases during the winter months and aligns with global projections which anticipate the population age sixty and above will reach two billion by twenty fifty. And whereas the Age Friendly Rio Grande Valley initiative led by Dr. Sudarshan Pasupuleti, did I say that correctly, Doc? Great. Professor of UTRGV School of Social Work and his team with a seed grant and in collaboration with LRGV Area Agency on Aging, Consistent with the World Health Organizations and and AARP's Age Friendly City Framework encourages cities and counties to promote age-friendly communities throughout the Rio Grande Valley. And whereas active aging is a lifelong process whereby an age-friendly community is not just elder-friendly, but also intended to be friendly for all ages while fostering environments that honor, support, and integ- and integrate older adults into all aspects of social life through all-inclusive infrastructure, policies, workplaces, healthcare, and social services. And whereas the Age Friendly City Community Framework endeavors to recognize and address the needs of individuals across all age groups irrespective of their capabilities and capacities, these communities promote active aging by maximizing opportunities for health, activity, and security within their living environments. And whereas the city of F.A.R. is dedicated to ensuring the needs and interests of all residents that are served and as age-friendly community, it'll take lead in optimizing opportunities for all ages. Now therefore, I, Michael Pacheco, in representation of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the city of F.A.R., Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim the sixth day of May, twenty twenty-four, as the city of F.A.R. Age Friendly City Day.
Next we have proclamation two B proclaiming May twelfth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four as F.A.R. Police Memorial Week.
Chief's here.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, sir.
Commissioners. Dr. Flores, I'd like to thank you at the police department for this proclamation except for the twelfth through the eighteenth in recognition of Police Officer Memorial Week or Police Officer Week and Police Officer Memorial Day on the fifteenth. For us as a department, it is a very special day and a day also in which we honor one of our fellow sergeants who passed away, August ninth, twenty thirteen, Sergeant J. O. Garcia. We also use this day to recognize all the officers that are fallen throughout the country, but specifically here locally in the areas we've seen in the last couple of years, there was an increase slightly of fallen officers in the line of duty. We have our motor unit assisting with the funeral escort tomorrow on Corpus Christi for the Corpus Christi officer that was also passed away in the line of duty a couple of weeks ago. So we have a few events planned this week to help, next week, I'm sorry, to help us celebrate this and memorialize the fallen officers.
I'm sorry, but your loss as a group. Sorry about that. All right.
I got it.
Yes, sir. Commissioner?
Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States has designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. And where there are approximately nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the F.A.R. Police Department, some sixty thousand assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in approximately seventeen thousand injuries. Since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, over twenty-four thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the name of these dedicated police servants are engraved on the walls of the law, National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial in Washington, D.C., and two hundred and eighty-two new names of fallen heroes are being added this spring. Whereas May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen soldiers, officers, and their families. The city of F.A.R. hereby formally designates and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Now therefore, I, Bobby Carrillo, representing Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the city of F.A.R. Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim the week of May twelfth through the eighteenth of twenty twenty-four as F.A.R. Memorial, F.A.R. Police Memorial Week.
All right.
Next we have item two C proclaiming May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth as twenty twenty-four as National EMS Week.
For the record, this is the second time this year, this since after this administration that right before the war race. I mean, it seems to always have an accident and fakes his way in with a crutch, but that's okay.
If it wasn't for bad luck, I wouldn't have any luck at all.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Mayor Commission. So last week of May or May nineteenth through twenty-fifth is EMS Week and that's where we recognize our pre-hospital care professionals for everything that they do and not just us, but region-wide and statewide and nationwide. The big focus this year is recognizing the strong work they do, but also encouraging the new, the new younger people that want to introducing them into EMS. So some of the things that we're focusing on during EMS Week is not just recognizing our staff, mental health-wise, resiliency, but also we're going to be going out to schools. One day is EMS Children's Day, so we're going to actually be visiting five different schools. On Thursday, the twenty-third is actually Stop the Bleed and Save a Life Day. And we're having Stop the Bleed classes all day long. EMS is going to be open for people to come tour the EMS station, the ambulances, the equipment. We have five hundred spots open for those classes and we already have a hundred and sixty-five of those spots filled. So we encourage the public to please go to our Facebook's page, the city's Facebook page, and there's a QR code so they can register and take the classes. And there's classes all day long. We're not just doing that alone. We're partnering originally with all the hospitals in our region and with our RAC to be able to put those classes on.
A couple of, two things. When are you getting your, I don't know if you ordered it yet, but your your fast, your E-Fast machines for your units? When are you going to be getting that?
The for whole blood?
No, the E-Fast, the focused ultrasound. So if you can check people's chest and.
So so we've worked, we're working on a project with that. I know that DHR and UTRGV were working on a a project that does research. And so we're still in the process of trying to get that done. So we don't have a timeline of when we're going to get those, but that's that's the process that we're working on.
Okay, well, you don't have to wait for them because, I mean, at the end of the day, our population benefits from it. And then where are you on the, there was a technology you guys were going to use as a team to when you pick up clients, right, patients? You're going to be able to, I don't know if it's called Zoom or what it's called, but the physician or whether it's be mechanical medical center, regional, DHR Health or behavioral, they would be able to look in the ambulance at the actual patient, what's happening and guide you with either the attending and the institution. There was technology for that. When are you going to be implementing that on your units?
So there's currently, it's called the telemetry technology. We we hadn't really looked at it right now. We're actually working on something called Pulseera, which is a state-funded program. And so what we do is we have the ability to take a picture, send video to the ER as we get to the scene and we can talk back to them. It's not talking directly with the patient, but that's a beginning phase of it. But that's something that we want to budget for this fiscal, this next fiscal year.
Well, since it's Dr. Caballo and myself, that's our world. I can tell you right now, I, that doesn't help me. If I'm seeing you and I'm talking to you or taking care of this young gentleman here, this young lady, that's far more valuable to me.
Yes, sir.
As a physician, that I can immediately tell you what's what's what I see, what you're doing right or not doing right and how to best adjust on the spot.
Sure.
It's better if it's live. Don't don't waste your time spending money, resources on something that's, you know, still pictures and stuff. By the time you send it, the patient could have changed right away. So we prefer for it to be where you interact with the organization, whether it's Mechanical Trauma Center or DHR Trauma Center, for instance, or the Women's Hospital or Behavioral Hospital soon to come, right? We want the live because those those medical providers need to be able to help you on the spot.
Absolutely.
Okay, so don't forego that other one. We, that's not, we're not interested in that technology.
Okay. And we'll definitely get all the details and work on it for budget.
Okay. So who's who's got this?
I do.
Okay. Dr. Caballo, Commissioner?
Hey, Danny. Hey, guys. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service and whereas members of the EMS services teams are ready to provide life-saving care in those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas EMS service systems consist of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas members of the EMS services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Dr. Ramiro Caballero, in behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the city of F.A.R., Texas, by virtue of his authority invested in him, on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim the May of May fifteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations, sir.
All right, next we have item two D proclaiming May twenty twenty-four as National Stroke Awareness Month. All right. We have Mariolis Cano here from DHR.
Thank you so much, Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners. DHR Health is extremely happy that you are providing us with this opportunity, like always, with all the supporting of all our national observances that we have, that we do throughout the year. We want to continue to serve our community as being the only remaining community-owned hospital in the region. With that said, we wanted to make sure that today I'm joined by Ms. Irene Lardis, the Director of NeoScience, and she'll have some some words to say. We have Dr. Fernandez as well that will be providing some information on what National Stroke Awareness Month is really about. So on behalf of our physicians, of our board of managers, of our over six thousand employees, and and all our teams that are out there, we want to thank you for your continued support of the information, awareness, and education that you allow us to provide for the community. Thank you. With that, we'll have Dr. Fernandez to say a few words.
Well, we want to thank you to the city of F.A.R. for joining forces with us to celebrate the May of, the month of May as the Stroke Awareness Month. This started as a result of a presidential proclamation in nineteen eighty-nine and is still very important because stroke is the main cause of disability and the third cause of death in the state of Texas. So let's join forces and start to be sure that everybody knows the symptoms of strokes, the best stroke preventions and treatments that we have to offer so we can help our community, friends, and and family. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the support from the city of F.A.R. And when we pulled our data, we saw that regionally only seventeen percent of our population is arriving to the hospitals within one hour. So of course, time is brain and every second matters, every minute. There are millions of neurons that are lost. So we wanted to ensure that we share that information with the community and thank you so much for your support.
Hey, Doc?
Yes.
A couple of questions. So what do you do to yourself and what's your involvement with the strokes?
Well, when a patient has an acute ischemic stroke, there are different type of treatments depending the location of the clot and the the timing. There are medical management and in those cases, there are certain drugs that help to dissolve the clot. And there are interventional techniques where we go inside of the arteries that are occluded in the brain and we remove the clots, re-establishing the the blood supply to the brain. So that is basically our role in a stroke. We also treat bleedings and other diseases, but that is the main service to the community in helping to recover those patients that have had a stroke.
And would you find it, I don't know if you were here a minute ago, we're talking about EMS services and where initiatives are to have a, I don't know what else to call it, but I call it live. And where we're going to pick up a patient, say a patient is, they call in and they believe they they're falling down or they have a change in their speech or they have a weakness of develop all of a sudden, the institution will be able to see the patient live, whether it'll probably be in the ER, I would imagine, but you'll be able to see the patient live and be able to help us take care of that patient as they arrive. And so I don't know if that that would be meaningful to you as a as a physician and this is what you guys do?
That is helpful, particularly in areas where there are big distances to cover. Why? Because there are criteria to identify what patients have minor strokes versus large basal occlusions, that is where all these treatments have the impact. So that that set of symptoms are called pre-hospital scores. We use here something called BAN. But that said, the accuracy of those symptoms usually of those scores is based on the evaluation of a specialist. Not every EMS provider has the same ability to diagnose those patients. The chances of communicating with the hospitals helps to the physician or whoever is answering that call to guide that provider where to go. Why? Because there are national rules where if you have a minor stroke, a TIA, you should go to the closest primary stroke center. Now, if you have a major stroke, unless you have to drive more than twenty minutes in excess, you have to go to a comprehensive stroke center. So I think that is the the main service. All that said, we have talked many times with our EMS providers and some people find that in these short transfers of five minutes or ten, to establish all that telecommunication or video conferencing in in real time may be a waste of of their time. But give or take, we had been trying to do that with, I'm sorry, this is F.A.R., but we we start counting because it's such a spread the semi-rural and rural population. But there are some financial barriers to it to to have the kind of system that is HIPAA compliant and and fast and effective.
Well, yeah, I I don't know about sarcasm, but as for for our perspective, I mean, once once you have a stroke, it is permanent and you're, you know, somehow limited in what you can do with your life now and it causes a lot of verdict on people, especially the patient. So I think they would, even five minutes or not, it would make a difference for them to be treated more aggressively or sooner, I I think they would be interested in it. So from our perspective, that's where we're going to be moving and we'll probably reach out to the stroke centers in the area and see who wants to participate with our EMS and educating and making sure we stay abreast of all the current medications or what you need.
That that will be great and I think it's like everybody's seen, it has to be tried and and tune up in in the, you know, real. and tune up in the, you know, real setting to become helpful.
Absolutely.
It has been helpful in other communities, and I don't doubt that will be helpful here.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so we're, we're going to bring them up, right? Who's reading this? Who's got this one? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Chavez.
Right. First of all, I want to thank DHR for your support in the stroke awareness. Thank you for being here. Grass strokes are the leading cause of long-term disability and the third-leading cause of the death in the state of Texas. And whereas in the United States, about seven hundred and ninety-five thousand people suffer stroke each year, someone has a stroke every forty seconds, and every four minutes, someone dies. Whereas in the Rio Grande Valley, approximately thirty-six hundred people are hospitalized annually due to stroke, in which there were at least a hundred and eighty-six deaths in twenty-twenty-three. Whereas there are life-saving treatments that must be administered as soon as possible, and in the Rio Grande Valley, only about seventeen percent of the patients suffering from a stroke arrive at the hospital within one hour of their stroke onset, because the community members do not recognize stroke or understand the importance of calling nine-one-one immediately. Whereas, DHR Health is certified by the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services and the Joint Commission as a comprehensive stroke center, providing the most advanced and advanced stroke care available. And whereas, the stroke warning signs can be recognized using the acronym BFAST: Balance, Eyes, Face, Arm, Speech, and Time, which includes sudden numbness or weakness of the face, arm, or leg, especially on one side of the body. Sudden confusion, trouble speaking or understanding, sudden trouble seeing in one or both eyes, sudden trouble walking, dizziness, loss of balance and coordination, a sudden severe headaches with no known cause. Now, therefore, I, the new Chavez, on behalf of our great Mayor of Farr, Ambrosio Hernandez, by virtue of the authority vested in him, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty-four as Stroke Awareness Month.
All right, thank you.
Okay, with the phone first. Three, two, one. Camera. Ready? Three, two, one. One more, three, two, one.
Anybody for a public testimony?
Yes, sir. We have Mr. Esteban Cárdenas. He registered to speak on Consent Agenda Item Six I.
Six I, six I.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Esteban Cárdenas, for the record.
Yes.
I'd like to thank the City of Farr, Board of Commissioners, and the Mayor for letting me speak this afternoon. Thank you.
Yeah.
I highly favor for the request for qualifications for professional engineering services for water and wastewater improvement projects. Henry Farr and his business partner, John Kelly, founded the Louisiana and Rio Grande Canal Company, which constructed an irrigation system and is for his sugarcane fields, and later on to vegetable and cotton farms. Now, more than a hundred years later, with improved modern engineering, water is now being supplied to our homes and businesses. We drink, cook, wash our clothes, dishes, take a bath with the city's water. We need to make sure that the city's water infrastructure is up to date and improve whatever needs to be fixed. Water is a way of life, and I look forward to see improvements on our water's infrastructure for purification, to live a more healthier and cleaner, high-quality water for the citizens of Farr. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to yield back my time to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere. Hold on a second. Where are you? Where are we with this water project? That answers his question.
Yeah, we're moving along. We're actually about to bid out the raw water reservoir project, and we're going to do improvements to the water treatment plan, so all of that, it's coming from this.
Do we know how much investment that is?
I don't have the exact number right now, but just in the water, raw water reservoir, it's about eight million, I think. And for the water treatment plan, it should be about twenty-five.
Yeah, it should be almost forty mil, yeah. Okay.
Pretty good, pretty good. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearings? All right, under City Manager's Report, we have the City Engineers' Report. It's in your packets. If you have any questions, Ruben Alphato's here to answer them. All right, next we have item five B, Submission of Sales Tax Collection Report for April twenty-twenty-four. We were ranked number five and had one point nine percent year-to-date growth. All right, next we have Yudi with City Events of Interest.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Mayor Yudi Gonzalez, with your Office of City Communications for the record. Before we move on to some of the reminders that we have on a few great events that are approaching, these are just a few recaps of events that just happened that were very successful, and we want to show you what they were like. So the first one is Paint the Park, and let's take a look.
This afternoon, we are here to judge the wonderful Paint the Park parking spaces here at Vanguard Nature Park. The theme was planet versus plastics. It was just an amazing tribute to all things art and having to do with reducing, reusing, and recycling.
I have a passion for painting, so anytime I get an opportunity to do something, I like to participate, and I wanted to take on the challenge.
I just wish to spread a message of ways that we can diminish the impact that plastic has in our planet. So I just wanted to show this because I wanted to put ocean pollution in light. A lot of us have a future, and without our planet, none of that is going to be possible.
It got these folks to think about conservation, about what is important in the planet. It's, it's an incredible sight for us to see.
This was a beautiful event spearheaded by a couple of folks. We had Mr. Adolfo Garcia out there with our Memorial Library. We had Dr. Sinta Gutiérrez with the Public Health Department. We had Vanessa Soto with Events. We had Sergio Staff with the Parks and Reg Department. Overall, a great turnout, and we have a couple of them here, if anybody wants to go into detail on this event and the feedback they received.
Do you capture those things on aerial? I mean, do we photograph them?
Yes, we actually requested the drone that day, but because of the wind speeds, there are certain laws and certain restrictions that we have, and so we couldn't have a drone out there that day.
You mean, our law?
I'm sorry?
The city's?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we go through Mr. Kenneth Ennis, and then based on certain rules and criteria.
But our own rules, City of Farr's rules?
Yes. Is Mr. Kenneth here?
Kenneth Ennis, Director of Public Safety Communications. The rules are not, the city's rules are actually the FAA rules.
Oh, okay.
So, based on wind speeds and the type of equipment we have.
Sure.
We can or cannot fly that particular day, we were outside of the limits, which would have potentially caused an accident with the individuals there and/or the equipment.
So is there better equipment?
There is better equipment, yes.
Oh.
The particular drone that we have at the time, or at this moment, does not support the wind speed for that day.
I think you better upgrade, because they're going to have, I mean, they keep having these different events, and we do want the aerial views for our public so they can see it, right?
Yes.
So they can enjoy it.
Yeah, so we did just make a purchase for some drones that will support it, so they should be coming in rather soon. Just didn't have it for that day.
Okay, so you don't have a delivery date yet?
No.
Okay.
I think we should have gotten a different date, or we just can't go back anymore and do it when winds are lower?
Yeah, definitely.
Oh.
Yeah, definitely. Whenever the weather and the atmosphere provides a perfect flight, then we could definitely go back and get those orders.
I think that should be an option, if a department requires for you to be out there, the drone, and it was very windy, and you automatically know that next day is not that windy. I think you should reach out to the director and ask if they still want that drone.
Okay.
We don't have to go buy drones, because probably the winds are fifty miles an hour, we're not going to go buy a drone that can withstand fifty miles an hour, right?
That particular speed, yeah, we would have any drones to do that.
Is that what the problem was, fifty mile power winds, or what?
So, the height that we needed to get to, the winds were about thirty to thirty-five miles an hour, with gusts up to forty. So, we wouldn't have been able to fly until we had a drone.
With the current drone?
With the current drone, yes.
With the new drone, you would.
Yes, with the new drone, we would be able to fly in a higher.
How much are these drones?
The particular drone that the media uses is about.
Another one we would need.
The one that we need is about twenty-five, thirty thousand. That one will support winds up to like fifty-five, sixty miles an hour.
Yeah, okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. Again, a great event. People were really happy to be out there. They took their pets, and everybody was having a good time. There was food, there was music, and people were just, you know, chatting, so it was a great event. Our next recap is Mayor's Prayer Luncheon that took place last week at our Pepe Salinas Recreation Center. So, here's a glimpse of how this event, you know, went.
Our goal today was to be sure that our public knew that we continue to be a city of faith, a city of family. On National Day of Prayer, we want to be sure we brought in leaders who have that message, have that knowledge, and belief, and their system, and their core.
But you know what? The valley has embraced me, and it's also God's country.
You know, life is hard. We all experience different difficulties, so it's good to come together today on an event like this, on National Day of Prayer, to pray for each other, to lift each other up as we continue through our daily lives.
Signing our seats here in Farr, but also reach out to the brothers and sisters of the world.
Whatever our challenges are, we can rely on each other to get us through that, through faith, through family, through community. And we believe that our community is our family. So, today we also pray for our community, we pray for our city leadership, and, you know, I'm very grateful to our City Commission and to our mayor for the opportunity, and I'm grateful to God for the ability to be able to lead our great city.
Also, when I run into people, they say, you know, what drives City of Farr? And all you have to do is be a member of the National Day of Prayer. That's all you have to do. In Farr, the two main pillars are, will continue to be, family and faith. It will always be that way. I understand sometimes it gets hard for people, but at the end of the day, we know that's the drive from our population, our residents, City of Farr. That's who we are, that's who we'll continue to be now and in the future.
Perfect. Our next recap, this is a great event that happened Saturday, and this was a warrior race with more than one hundred and ten participants, and here's a glimpse of that event.
Did you highlight Danny?
Drowning.
This morning, we had a third annual warrior race for our participants, were able to compete against each other, in an event filled with swimming, bicycling, running, and a great obstacle course. We always try to make it bigger and better for the participants, and especially more challenging.
It was tougher than I thought, but it was a lot of fun, especially this obstacles here.
I recommend it just to everyone. It's a lot of fun, it is very challenging, so if you're in good health, sign up, we'll see you next year.
So, there you go, that was a warrior race this year. Close to one hundred and ten participants, we did have first, second, and third place winners for both female and male, and this year, we increased the number of obstacle courses to a total of fifteen. We do have Mr. Sergio Alanis here for, I don't know, any specific questions on this event, and good job to all of his team, because it was definitely a lot more challenging than other years, and people really enjoyed it.
Great, good, once again, great job, thank you, great job. Every year, you're making it better.
Okay, so that sums up our recap, so just a few reminders of upcoming events. So we'll have Mother's Day event, our Mother's Day event, A Night Under the Stars, happening this Friday at our Farr One Amphitheater. This is a ticketed event, so far, we've had four hundred people stop by for their tickets, but we won't be turning away anybody, obviously, that shows up on Friday to this event. We really encourage, you know, our community, come out and bring your mom. It's going to be a special day, and we're going to have, you know, as Vanessa has mentioned in previous meetings, we're going to have chakiri boards, roses, surprises, and photo ops for all moms on that day. Our next event is a memorial ceremony, this is to honor fallen officers. This will be taking place at our EMS headquarters Tuesday, May fourteenth, from nine AM to eleven AM. Our next event is a memorial service. Now, this is going to be more like a mass at the Calvary Christian Center, happening Wednesday, which is the following day, and this will be happening from eleven AM to twelve noon. Our next event is meet our Farr Public Safety Dispatcher Team, and we'll also have Maya celebrating her birthday. And this is, you know, when you suggested that we do more events where people can come and meet the entire Safety Dispatch Team, your package should be reflecting a different flyer than the one we have up on the screen, but it's the same event. It's the same event that we'll be having out there. This is happening May sixteenth at five-thirty PM, and we really encourage, you know, people to come out and meet some of the staff that's part of the Public Safety Department. Kenneth is also here, if there's additional questions regarding this event. Police Department Mind Matters Health Fair, this is a month where their, our PD is really focusing on mental health awareness, so this event is really revolved around that, and actually having booths with information regarding mental health. They'll have food, music, brochures, and additional information around this topic. This is happening Friday, May seventeenth, from six to eight PM. And our last event, EMS Chief Danny Ramirez touched up on this a few minutes ago, so this is the class he was talking about. This is Thursday, May twenty-third. This flyer is up on social media, they can scan the QR code to be part of these classes. These are five classes happening in one day, as Danny mentioned, there's already close to a hundred and plus slots that are already filled, but there's plenty of room, you know, for more people to get involved. Stop the Bleed has been a very successful campaign, really educating the public on, you know, fast ways to really stop the bleed and emergency scenarios that happen at home that can really save one's life before, you know, the ambulance gets there, or before we get somebody transported into a hospital. These techniques, you know, really, really help our community. So, again, we really encourage people to sign up. This is happening at the EMS headquarters, and as you can see in the flyer, these are going to be happening all day long. If there's additional questions, Danny Ramirez is also here to answer those. And that concludes the upcoming Events of Interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Commission, at this time, I'm going to call Kenneth Ennis up, and Carlos Avendaño. Mayor Commission, I think you all know just how important Public Safety Communications is. They're the first link in the chain between, you know, our emergency services and the citizens that we serve. And recently, Kenneth and his staff were awarded, provided some prestigious awards at a conference. Carlos Avendaño received the Silent Hero Award, and Kenneth received Operational Professional of the Year and the Presidential Award. Kenneth, we just want to congratulate you for your efforts and your leadership, you know, for your staff, and Carlos, thank you for representing the City of Farr well, and congratulations on much well-deserved awards.
Thank you, appreciate it. Once again, Kenneth Ennis, Public Safety Communications Department for the record. I wouldn't have been able to do this without any of my staff. The staff that went with me to the conference, that's the first thing I told them is that it may have my name on it, but it belongs to the department, right? So, Carlos Avendaño here, he's recipient of the Silent Hero Award. That award is an award that's given out to an individual who goes above and beyond, right, and doesn't really seek the recognition, right? So they're kind of working in the background, doing what they got to do to progress the department and the industry, so I really want to applaud him for his. And doesn't really seek the recognition, right? So they're kind of working in the background, doing what they gotta do to progress the department and the industry, so I really wanna applaud him for, for his, uh, award.
That's wonderful. Congratulations.
What's the name of the conference?
Uh, it's the Texas Public Safety Conference.
And when did that happen?
Uh, it happens, uh, April of every year.
You guys got work, did we send our department, media department to?
Yes, actually, we, we did have a media representative attend, uh, the conference. I had no idea that this was gonna happen. It was for completely different reasons, so it kind of, uh, God's grace worked out. Uh, but, um, I've been working really, really hard with the Texas, uh, Public Safety Communications, um, agencies, Texas NINA, Tex- Texas APCO. Uh, I used to sit on the board. I kinda left the board, uh, and I was actually, uh, voted onto the board as the vice president. Uh, so from twenty twenty-five, for the first time in twenty-five years, the Texas Public Safety Conference is coming to the Valley. So they were there shooting a promotional video.
Jonathan, who decides when media goes to a conference and doesn't go to a conference, or do we send them to other conferences, or?
You know, typically those get requested, you know, by the directors and or the media department themselves.
They, they approve? Do we have a board that approves those?
I approve those on a case-by-case basis.
So if somebody didn't went, if a media department didn't went to a conference, it's because you did not approve that?
It's because I didn't see it, or I did not approve it, yes.
Right, or somebody didn't request it.
Correct.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That particular situation, uh, we knew that we were awarded the conference for twenty twenty-five and potentially the next three years after that. Uh, so part of the goal of getting them to come down here was to shoot a promotional video. And the only way that we could do that is by actually sending them to the conference so that they could get, uh, some footage of, of all the events, right? Not only the educational sessions, but all the networking events that we attend, uh, after the conference. Uh, so I think, um, come twenty twenty-five, April, uh, April the second through the sixth, uh, it's gonna be huge for the Valley, not only, not only for McAllen. McAllen is the hosting city, but it's gonna be huge for the Valley, uh, to actually bring that down here for the first time in twenty-five-plus years.
That's outstanding. That's great. So you guys are doing a bunch of good stuff, all, all the staff.
Yes.
You know, and, but it just bugged me. Go back to a previous conversation. So your original drone, so I wanna make sure, what did it cost you?
So. So we, we have a couple of different drones, but the drones that we use for media, uh.
The one that can't cut the mustard on the wind?
Right, so the average cost of that drone is about six thousand.
Okay, and then you have this new one, right?
So we have, um, three additional drones that.
No, 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 the new one that can fly in, in this high-wind thing.
Yes.
And what does it cost?
So the, it's about twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, a- and generally, the, that particular drone is, is utilized in the public safety sector, uh, because it, it has its, the cameras are built for thermal imaging, infrared. It's not really built for recording high-quality videos for, for media, or for video production.
That's great. Well, I, I, I want the best for my city, so I'll, I'll cut you deal. You order it, I'll give you half.
Okay.
I'll give you half the money, but I want you to order it, okay? Cause, cause we wanna be sure, cause you can do so many great things as directors, so many beautiful events. I don't wanna miss anything, and it's, it's not as simple as just change it, right? Because people have schedules to do.
Right.
And, and Commissioner Chavez is correct. If we can change it, right, without disrupting people's lives, we should do that. I have seen a hundred percent right. The reality is, it's, at least, at least for my schedule, I, I can't. It's very hard to do that, cause I have other things to do, right? Once you set a calendar, it's hard. Not impossible, but it's just hard. So I, I don't want excuses, so I'll cover half of it, okay? But you better order it. That's all I'm gonna tell you.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, cause we want the best for our city.
You just make sure it takes good video, because the one that he ordered cannot take good video.
Yeah, so that, that's gonna be the, the task.
Well, that's your problem. You better order the right one.
That's my problem, right? I'll, I'll, I'll come up with a solution.
I'm not gonna tell you what you order. That's on you.
Make sure it takes good video.
That's what public safety is all about, man. We're, we're faced with a problem, and we find a way around it.
Yeah, don't waste our money.
Yeah, no. No, no, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be what you need.
Just let us know.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Yes, of course. Alright.
Next, we have item six, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the governing body, and will be enacted by one motion.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Next, we have item seven, eight, Consideration in Action. If any on resolution appointing one member to the Far International Toll Bridge Board. And staff recommends Roberto Garza Ramos.
Okay, second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Roberto, what area of, of, uh, the bridge function does he serve? Logistics, or what?
Logistics. Right.
You know, one, one, we, we already have a lot of members in the bridge board. They're in logistics, have warehousing, all this. I think we need to, um, have somebody that represents gas and oil, um, or some kind of other services that uses our bridge. So we can have, have our, uh, different members that have different inputs into our bridge.
Sure.
And, and have better services.
Yeah.
Because it would seem like we're concentrating in one service.
Yeah.
And not looking at everything that we service.
Right.
So in the future, I think we need to look at somebody other than just logistics, because we already have that.
Yeah. Good point. We'll do it next time. Yeah, I agree. Any other, any other, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Right. Item eight, Purchasing, eight A, Consideration in Action. If any authorizing the purchase of new furniture for the Far Memorial Library from Library Interiors of Texas LLC from Lakeway, Texas, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventeen seventy-six. This is a budgeted item. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There was no, where are you? What's the little?
Uh.
Oh. So no local vendor can, no local vendor can, uh, satisfy this for you?
Adolf Garcia?
Yes, sir.
I have a director. Yes, uh, this is, we went with a local rep, but they sourced.
Local rep? Does that mean they're here?
Yeah, they have a local office, yeah.
Huh?
He's out of McAllen, the local rep.
This company's out of McAllen?
No, the, the rep is out of McAllen.
Well, that's not local.
Oh.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm just asking because we always try and u- use our, our local vendors first, you know, in the city, right?
Yes.
Then the county, then the Rio Grande Valley, then, fine. But if, in the future, I mean, there is, I mean, having an office doesn't, that's not, with all due respect, that's not cutting the mustard. We want the infrastructure here. Cause those people create jobs for our, our neighbors, friends, everybody, our family, so we want to support local. So if it's equal, that's, that's all I would, I would ask, is not a.
Sure, if, if they have the furniture, we'll, we'll look into that.
Yeah. In the future.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Item nine eight, Considerate, Consideration in Action. If any authorizing city manager to enter into fee negotiations and scope of services with KPIX Resources Group from Frisco, Texas to conduct a water rate study.
Taken.
Cannot, no other local vendor for this, right?
Not for this one, sir.
Okay.
I just have a question.
Yes, sir, it's coming, sir.
Ruben, what is this study for? Is this for the water treatment plant, or?
Mayor Commission, Roberto Salis, uh, you, Public Utilities Director, for the record.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, it's for all future projects, both in water and wastewater. We're starting on the water side first, and then we're gonna jump to the wastewater.
Alright.
Oh, okay, so it's all-inclusive?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other discussions? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Item nine B, Consideration in Action. If any on Amendment Number Two, in the amount of three thousand four hundred and thirty point twenty-two to the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with RRP Consulting Engineers for the Highline West Road Project.
Motion to approve?
Second.
What, wait, what's RRP? Where are you?
That's the, uh.
No, I'm at, I was, yeah.
Okay.
It's the engineering company designing the Highline Road.
Okay, why is there a?
So there, there was additional requirements by the Texas Historical Commission regarding to methodologies and testing.
There's a what?
For the environmental clearance.
It's a new?
Yeah, requirements.
It's a new requirement?
Yes, by Texas Historical Commission.
Oh.
Because they have to clear the environmental, so they, they requested additional testing, so that this is.
Sure, okay. Thank you for the clarification, sir. Any further discussion? I was, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Item nine C, Consideration in Action. If any authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement with Frisco Children's Hospital for Ground Emergency and Non-Emergency Ambulance Transport Services.
Motion to approve?
Second.
One of those, for obvious reasons, right? Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item nine D, Consideration in Action. If any authorizing city manager to award a contract for the Collection System Improvements and Lift Stationment, Lift Station Elimination Project. Uh, staff recommends Morwell. They're out of mission.
I have a question.
Sure.
Who are we awarding this contract to?
To Morwell.
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 Can I answer?
Okay, so, second. Any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passed. We adjourned at five oh one. Thank you, everybody.